At this time officially we've adjourned our official business of any action that we would take. But always at all of my public commissioners meetings, we allow any of our residents or business owners to come before this office and have any public question, comment, or anything to do with our local government. So don't start asking me questions about the Braves or the Falcons or any of those type of things because I don't have the time to keep up with that. So anything that pertains to the office of the commissioner or any of the departments that fall under my jurisdiction is so commissioner be happy to talk to you about. Anything outside of that, we'll have to do that offline. We'll talk about the Braves later. So who would like to be first? Yes, sir.
I actually have two issues. One of them may not be appropriate for this, but my family has property over in Old Bell Room. And there was an issue with piece of property that was sold at auction. I believe Scott Thames has had some communication in months gone by. And my family's lake is receiving silt. And I believe that there's been a variance. And so we've had two driveways and now we're going for a third driveway. And we're continuing to have this silt. They tried silt fences, they've done different things. It has not been a planned development of any kind. It's been very unorganized. And we've had some professionals out there to evaluate. We've got a written report. And I'm going to be coming to, I guess, the appropriate department to talk about that and some resolution. However, it is, I think, been well spoken to the county through other people as I understand. And ultimately, we're the ones that's catching all the silt. And we're looking at something in excess of $20,000 to clean out the stream, clean out the lake, and that kind of thing.
Let me speak to that just briefly. I do have some awareness of that because I have talked with those property owners. They were very agitated with us because we just didn't let them take off without plan.
Right.
And so we required them to work with a engineering firm to get a document plan of what they were going to do and how they were going to control the stormwater and things of that nature. So there could possibly still be issues with the engineering design of the plan or the implementation of the plan or something of that effect. But we did stand firm to make sure that they follow the proper protocol and get an engineer involved with them to consult with them and draw up those plans. So if you're finding infractions as you indicate, if you would just, first step, communicate with the planning and zoning office, which is there in Rock Springs, and let them look at that and they can go out and do a site inspection from a code and building enforcement. And if there's something that they're not in compliance with, they can work to address or stop the job if needed from a compliance standpoint.
Okay, very good. I was able to catch some of the TV show last night. And I personally used to be a landowner in the Cove. No longer. I own a 400 acres that has now been bought by the DNR. I had the unfortunate pleasure of working with the previous administration. And anyway, in understanding what was going on, I've got a couple of questions about the old Barwick facility, which my family was originally involved with back in the 60s and 70s as it was growing and developing. It's my understanding that it's on the National Historical Register. And being on the register, it is something that falls into the Department of the Interior and also the National Park Service. That doesn't tell me anything. I really don't know what that means. And I'm asking for somebody in the county to help explain if that's important for that particular area as it comes to this rumor of this project that I guess is in question tonight. And if that is so, the other question that I would have is, as I understand it, it is zoned industrial. And if it's industrial, is it heavy industrial, is it lot industrial? Is there a different classification that would require a modification? And is it granted? Some just basic things that I would like to understand about how the county's moving forward and how it affects whatever it was set up in the 60s under the Historical Register.
I don't have the answers to that.
I understand.
So we'll have to, we've got another day and we'll get our county attorney to look at it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, who's next? Well, I guess that pretty much wraps it up. There's nobody else to add. Oh, okay. I thought everybody's being so quiet. I thought everybody was ready to go home.
My wife and I have been living in Mountain Cove for about 12 years. It's one of the most beautiful places in the old country.
Absolutely.
Amen. We absolutely love it there. And they won't put a chicken slaughter in fact that they're right in the middle of it. I just don't think we should let that happen. It would ruin the whole thing. Everybody very upset about it. And I don't know who's bad about this. It's okay for them to come out of their plant to do this, but we don't want that. Absolutely do not want that to happen.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
I'm John Wolf.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wolf. Okay, yes, sir.
I would just like to say that I agree with this gentleman here. I've been living in the Kensington area now for approximately 20 years on Kensington Road. The best thing that I've seen that happened on Kensington Road was Dowrychold disappeared. The creek was polluted, had a horrible smell. Sometimes the creek would have a white milky look to it where I believe there were chemicals being built at that time. And it had an impact, I think, on the people that lived there. There's not many of us. But with the trucks, the smell, I believe the environmental damage that was being done, it was basically the rigs there called Milton Road where, you know, I'd cross a lot and see your stock and look, you know. And I just feel that putting another plant or two plants in that area without some type of reassurance to the residents there that, you know, Lord, we're going to have some smells, we're going to have some bitters, we're going to have a lot of traffic, there's going to be trash on the side of the roads. I know these impacts are going to happen because I've seen it.
Yes.
And I just think that good consideration should be taken for the environment and for the few people that do live in that area if this is going to actually take place. What do you think about this? I mean, I've never been to one of these meetings before. I'm a concerned citizen. Love the country, love the Cove. Would like to see it become a better place. And I don't think that the environmental impact and the traffic and everything I could see going into that particular area, I just don't feel like it's a good thing. I mean, I understand we need jobs, I understand we need revenue from the county. But just remember, there's people live there.
Yes.
Yes.
And I think we should be respected as to the judgment takes place for whatever's going to happen. And that's all I ask.
Thank you. Okay, yes, ma'am.
I'm not coming up there, but are alternate sites being considered for this plant? Or how far down the road are they in the process of planting?
I wouldn't be able to answer that. I don't have that answer.
Who would have that answer?
I have, I have some answers on that if I can.
We'll just say she still has the floor.
No, that's okay. Go ahead. I just, I've got you good.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to set some, I guess, things straight as far as the record with the Macklemore Cove Preservation Society's lawsuit.
Tell us your name, please.
My name's Paul Almeyer. My wife is the president of the society preservation group. I've been involved in, you know, our meetings and kind of our objectives. Our primary objective is to keep a large, massive scale chicken slaughterhouse out of the Cove. We don't think large industry of that scale, especially a unreputable company like Pilgrim's Pride, has any place in the Cove. It doesn't have, it's not compatible with the draws that the Cove has. People are drawn to the Cove for the natural beauty, God's creation, the relatively undeveloped. It's largely agrarian. To bring 2,000 employees in, vehicles, tractor trailers, four lane highway? I don't know where it ends. But I just wanted some clarification on this lawsuit that we filed. I mean, the lawsuit ends when Pilgrim's Pride says, "We've broken our contract." Our contract has expired with Mr. Crutchfield. I spoke to Mr. Crutchfield personally and he told me the contract is pending with Pilgrim's Pride until the end of May. And I'm happy to substantiate that for you if you want. I didn't sign a non-disclosure. Maybe he did, maybe he didn't, but he was free to speak with me about it. So as far as I'm concerned, it's not rumor anymore. So we want to be proactive and we want to stop this deal before it happens. I mean, we don't want Pilgrim's Pride to purchase the property and then realize, man, people hate us here. Now we're going to sell this property. It's just much easier to make our voice known now. I mean, that's what this lawsuit's about. So, I mean, when we find out from Mr. Crutchfield, the Pilgrim's Pride, or whoever it is, that this contract has expired, that we are no longer considering that site in the Cove, then heck, we're happy. I mean, that's our objective here. So, I mean, we're spending, shoot, we're paying double. I mean, we're paying our hard earned money to hire this lawyer to file the lawsuit. We're paying for your lawyer, our tax dollar. And we're paying twice here. So we don't want this. We don't want to pay lawyers. We don't want Pilgrim's Pride in the Cove.
Okay, who's next, everybody? Yes, ma'am.
I have some of my own questions, some questions that have been sent to me by people that couldn't come. And I'll start with those. One person was really worried about Dry Valley Road. They said that it was one of the worst in the county and they just wanted me to check in and see if there was any plan on fixing it at all.
Okay, can we take those one at a time?
You can.
Okay. What we're in the process of doing now, we have an engineering firm that is doing a complete evaluation of every single county road in Walker County. And they're going to take an evaluation process that was created by the state DOT to give a grading score on every road due to the condition of the road, safety, and also all of the bridges and culverts that are in our county as well, to give us to create a database. We do not have currently a database of the conditions of these roads. So that information will be imported into our GIS system and show that grading so we can put this up on the map to look at the conditions of the roads by a trained, licensed engineer that specializes in understanding the conditions of the roads and what the solutions are and different options. Because as you're very aware, we were successful in the citizens getting on board with Walker County to pass the T-Splash. And so we are looking forward to those funds to start coming in. So that went into effect April 1st, 2018. The vendors, retailers that collect those fees, or that tax, excuse me, it's not a fee, but tax, they remit that in May. And so those remittances are being sent to the state now. And once the state takes and reconciles that and divides that out between our local cities and the county based off of the documentation that's provided to them from what the citizens voted on, then they will disperse those funds electronically to each of the governing authorities to be able to use that money for transportation improvement, right away, and infrastructure, dealing with our bridge roads and right of ways. And so we're at the point now of gathering information so we can get an assessment so we best know how to spend that money. Because we've got a lot of roads that are in really bad shape. We've got some roads that just need some maintenance attention. We've got a lot of roads that need additional striping where the lines are gone. And so we're going to take all of that data and get it in a format where we can understand it and be able to evaluate how we want to prioritize that to make sure that we're spending and making the investments into that infrastructure the right way. So we're in the midst of that process. And so it's going to take a little more time through this summer to get that. And then once we start getting that information, we'll start sharing that in our public meetings and bringing people up to speed on what projects. And one of the reasons too that we're doing this, many folks have probably heard about, there's a lot of talk at the federal level about infrastructure improvement grant funds. And so you may remember a few years ago, the buzzword was shovel ready, that you want projects that are shovel ready to get immediate funding. And so this is going to put us in a position to have the data and the information and have a plan in place. And so if and when additional federal grant funding comes and is passed down through the state, we're ready, we've got a plan, and we can capture those additional dollars, take our T-Splash dollars and use that as the matching part of those funds. And so many times those projects are an 80/20 match from the federal level. So we want to be in a position to have a plan of priority, use the grading system by the state DOT, and be ready with our 20% of T-Splash money to be able to accept the 80% of the federal money coming down. So we're working this plan and we feel like it's going to pay off forward. It's going to be a very good investment for our community to get our infrastructure back in place.
Can you speak at all about the cost of hiring that company that does the grading and everything?
Yeah, the, once they get finished, and they're going to be billing us over a period of time as they do the work, but that project is really more of an investment because you're in a situation, if we don't invest that money into the data, when the grants start coming out, we're at ground zero.
Right, no, understandable.
And so the communities that are. So what we're hoping to be able to do, it's going to be probably somewhere around $85,000 of that investment to get that data and get that consulting. And so if we can get one additional road mile paid, it costs about $100,000 to resurface one mile of road. It will pay for itself in less than a mile. And so we feel like that'd be a really, really good return on that investment by having the data. If we can get one additional mile paid, and that shouldn't be hard to do, either from additional state dollars or additional federal dollars or a combination, one additional mile, that investment's returned for us.
Okay. Someone else asked, what is going in on 27 and Noble across from Westbrook Furniture?
I think that it's a door and glass company. Does anybody know 100%? They're in Noble, the new prefab building there close to Westbrook Furniture, north of the tire store there in Noble.
That's an overhead, though.
Over, yeah, it's an overhead door, commercial overhead door company that's building a new facility there.
Someone else asked the status of the now vacant building where Primary Healthcare was and how long the county has to put in another low income health provider in that building?
We ended up working with Primary Healthcare to give them an extension because they are working on renovations of another facility that they've leased. They ran into some unforeseen additional cost in their build out that they were needing. And so to help them get to the next place that they wanted to be, we felt like that it was in the best interest of the community to give them that extension. I believe that goes through May 30th.
Yes.
And so at that time, we will be able to get into the building and see if any repairs or maintenance or paint, whatever needs to be done. But we've got some exciting things that we're working on to be able to use that facility for public services for low to moderate income families in that community.
For the T-Splash, that, we still have the match money for 2017, or not the match money, sorry. The grant ready for us to use when we have the match money for 2017.
Right. We still have the, as you say, the 2017, what they call the L-Meg money that comes from the state. Round numbers, that was about a million dollars. So we have those funds. And so once we get the T-Splash in, we can use that state money. But we haven't been able to use it because we didn't have that local match.
Right.
And I didn't want to borrow the money to do it.
Yeah, I know. Completely agree with you there. The filter trailers that we're using, do we still have those? And how much longer do you plan on us having them?
Yeah, it's a very good question. What she's speaking of is that the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority there in Fairview, we have our water treatment facility there on Lee Clarkson in Chickamauga. And last year, the aquifer became under the influence of surface water. And then when the tests were run, the tests showed results and traces of E. coli. And so we had to take and do a per-state protocol. We had to do a bold water advisory. And so normally what you would do in a case like that is if you're pulling water out of an aquifer that meets all the state or exceeds all the state standards of cleanliness and purity, take and advertise that, you put that water in your distribution system and you keep going. So if you find your water comes under the influence, then you just turn your filter plant on. Well, folks, filter plant didn't work because the filter plant was, had been partially dismantled and looks like a rusty old battleship. And so there was no filter plant. We got a building, but there was really no plant. And so working with the state of Georgia, who really stepped up and helped us in a time of great need and assigned us some very top people at the state to, they worked with us and gave us their cell numbers and said they were at our disposal 24/7 through that period of time. They put us in contact with a company up in Pennsylvania that has some of the latest technology of filtration. And they actually lease and sell filter, 53-foot tractor trailer filtering systems that looks like walking onto a spaceship. They're really high tech. It's amazing to see what those things do. Each one of those trailers will filter a million gallon of water a day. Well, the volume coming through that system is 2 million gallons a day. So we had to have two trailers in order to come off of the bold water advisory. So I think we ended up being under bold water advisory for a couple of weeks or so, don't quote me on that number, but something like that, until we could get those brought down from Pennsylvania, installed, go through all the procedures and checkpoints and do all of the testing and get the sign off of the Georgia Department of Natural Resources that we were 100% in compliance and we met all this, met or exceeded all those standards for water quality. The sad part is of the continued saga is those trailers are $30,000 a month each. And so it's a very expensive way to have to filter your water. There are, there is an alternative. We could unhook them and send them back and go back to boiling water. And that's just not a good option. So we have a monthly board meeting over in Flintstone. Every month, we have a board of five. I chaired that board, heard the Enabling Act that was enacted back in the early 70s. And we talk about this every month. We have been working with an engineering firm that the water companies worked with for many years and looking and having them study different options, looking at different types of technology, looking at, do we need one large plant, two midsize plants, three small plants, looking at the entire distribution system. Because we would rather take great caution and do this the right way, make sure that we've explored and looked at every option because we're fixing to make a decision that's going to affect our water system for a minimum of the next 30 years. And we're looking probably a decision that's going to probably come with a price tag somewhere probably around $10 million. And so we take that as a board very serious because we don't need to make a $10 million mistake and not have a plant big enough, have a plant too small, too large, the wrong type of technology, the wrong place. There's so many different factors that we're looking and studying at. And CTI Engineering out of Chattanooga has done a fantastic job of providing us information and data. We're also looking for love offerings from the state and federal government to help us figure out how to pay this back. Many times when you get into these infrastructure type projects with public utilities, most of the time, they're happy with a 30-year return on investment. That's just not good enough for me. That's too long. And so we are looking at solutions that will carry us for 30 years, but we need to be down under a 10-year return on our investment to make those numbers work over a period of 10 years or faster. Because I don't want my grandkids to be paying for this water system when I'm sitting on the rocking chair on the front porch. And so it's very important to me that we get this return on investment, make sure we got the proper documentation. So with that said, long explanation to get back to your answer. We still are probably a few months out from making a decision as a board. And then we're probably, from what's being told, depending on the system that is selected because they're all custom fit and custom designed, we're probably 12 months of construction, minimum, to do that. So we're still a little ways out. We are making that investment every month to make sure we've got 2 million gallons of the best quality water that money can buy. We feel like we're on the right track. We've got a very unified board. Everybody's on the same page. And we feel very confident that going slow and steady is the better approach instead of knee jerking and making our own decision.
I only have two more tiny houses. And one is about the fracking and deep well digging. I know we didn't have any ordinances on the book. Is there any short-term plans to address those?
Well, that's one of the tasks our county attorney's going to need to work on because the state legislation passed some legislation this year that addresses fracking as far as the state. So we're waiting to see if the governor signs that legislation and then also see where that puts us as a county from someone coming in here and fracking.
Pretty much the same question about tiny houses.
That's another area too. We do have an oratorium on that we've got to go back. Now that we have the animal control ordinances, we'll probably pick one or both of those back up and start working on what we need to do there. And it's not that we're against tiny houses. It's just that there needs to be proper guidelines in place. I was very excited to hear at the annual Association of County Commissioners meeting that the International Building Code has now released their version of proper construction and safety for tiny houses. So we're going to be taking a look at that. It may be just as simple as us adopting that International Building Code, which we use some of their adopted material currently. So it may be something that we can move very quickly on. But we just didn't need to be in a situation where there was no guidelines for public safety.
Right. And that was all the questions. I have one kind of statement, not about any particular situation, but as a general topic of job creation. We do have a surplus of the same type of monotonous jobs available. So with that being said, I think that it would be fairly safe for us to start looking at more creative, innovative, happier type of employment.
That's a very good point because, you know, we get a lot of opportunities to talk to a lot of great companies. And a lot of these companies are global companies. Many of them are Fortune 500 or Fortune 1,000 companies. And we had that conversation with them and after the non-disclosure is signed and we start being able to ask them questions and get information. And one of the things we ask them is what's their average wage? And what's their starting lowest wage? And, you know, minimum wage is about 725 an hour. If, and, you know, it's not anything negative about any particular company, but if they are in a global competitive environment where their wages are, say, $8, $10, or even $11 an hour, we're just not interested. Because we do have a surplus of that level of wage. And so opportunities that we're looking at and getting excited about and want to move forward with is going to be jobs that are being created in our county that's going to elevate that average wage that would surpass those numbers.
Which, wage is very important, but aside from wage, the actual work, we can look at more fulfilling.
Well, and also, as well as the wage, it's also... Well, and also, as well as the wage, there's also the benefit, you know, the employee benefits. And that was one of the things that we worked out with the resort up on, onto the mountain is that they've got to invest over $100 million. There was no front-end incentive money because we have no money. We, we don't have any money to give them or any in-kind services or anything. I mean, they're on their own totally with that investment. But once they invest 100-plus million dollars and create a minimum of 180 full-time jobs, and that's not full-time equivalents, but that's full-time jobs with benefits and insurance, then at the end of that year, they qualify for some property tax savings. But if they don't hit those numbers or they don't provide full-time benefits, then they, they don't meet the requirements. Okay, who's next? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Stephanie Everett. My great-grandfather was Virgil P. Everett. My great-grandmother was Martha Ada Agry Everett. My grandfather was J. P. Everett. My grandmother was Benny Everett. My father is Jack Everett. My mother is Sue Everett. My brother is Brent Everett, and I am Stephanie Everett. Our family has lived in McEnroe Cove for 100 years. My great-grandfather put his family and trust in a beautiful place that he purchased sight unseen, loaded them up on a hand-hewn wooden tractor wagon and came from Everett Springs. We have farmed, protected, cultivated. We've been teachers. We're engineers. We're passionate. We're loving. We've taken in people that have needed help. We've worked on our friends and family's farms for 100 years. And I speak specifically for myself, my father, my mother, and my brothers today. We do not want an absolutely deplorable corporation like Pilgrim's Pride operating in Walker County. That's all I have to say.
I'm Rico Owens and I live down on South Cedar Lane. I've been there 32 years. My brother and I built a house there that I peeled bark off the logs and talked about the rocker on the front porch. I'm sitting in my rocker on the front porch these days. And I really don't want to leave a lot of smell or anything else, water pollution or anything else going on. I mean, I planned on living there and dying there, and my ashes throwing out there. And evidently, y'all heard me say something about another NDA clause agreement. Do you sign a NDA with everybody?
Probably 99% of the time, it's required or conversations open.
But how does that bring government transparency? How, how can you be transparent if you can't talk about it?
Well...
And I mean, until it's too late. Once y'all have made the deal, then we're lost. We don't have a chance.
I'm going to introduce Robert Wardlaw. He's our staff member for economic development and community development. So I'm going to let him address and give an overview about an NDA and how that works.
I'm Rico Owens' photographer.
That's where I've seen that.
Yeah. I'm glad you're able to rock and enjoy.
Me too, and I want to continue to. I'm just getting started.
Sure, I'm happy to talk about these. I've heard more about non-disclosure agreements in the last two or three weeks than maybe in the last 30 years of which I have been dealing with non-disclosures. I think there are a couple of misunderstandings about non-disclosure agreements and I hope that maybe I can shed a little bit of light on them. I think the first and most important thing is some people have called me or emailed me in the last couple of weeks and tell me, "What is this non-disclosure thing?" Non-disclosures have been the standard practice for every single city, county, and state in the United States for decades, every last one of them. And I, I imagine some of you are saying, "Are you kidding me? I just heard about this." It's been kind of interesting to me that I'm hearing from people about this. This happens every city, every county, every state in the United States, every day on almost every single economic deal that happens in this country.
Well, that's what I call, excuse me.
Hold on, let me finish.
On smaller type deals, like if it's a, if it's somebody within an existing business and says, "Hey, you know, I'm interested in that building. I know someone just moved out across town." Things like that, people are just talking. When corporations are coming and looking and sending out site selectors around the country and around North America, and now every day, we're fighting against Asia. We're fighting in Europe, every single day for almost any deal of significance that we hope to get. And we love our county, but Walker County is not famous and we don't have an interstate. We're fighting every single day to bring quality jobs here. And the commissioner and I and the rest of the team, you know, we have some business experience and like to bring that to our friends and neighbors. And this is very, very difficult competitive work. So when the site selector calls, they would call me as your primary point of contact for economic development. They call and say, "Hey, Mr. Wardlaw, I have a company that is interested in something that's on the internet of a site that you have available. Would you like to talk to me?" "Sure, I would love to. Tell me about the company that you're representing." Okay, and then there's this. Okay, there's the non-disclosure. That's how that works and it's all the time, everywhere. We're dealing with so many different projects all the time. I don't want anyone to think that the one that you've been talking and hearing about lately is anything unusual in and of itself. It's not unusual at all. These things happen constantly. So at that point, we make a decision, do we sign this or do we not? If we want more information and to understand, hey, we might want to gather some facts here and see if this is a benefit to our neighbors in the county. You have elected your commissioner, who has appointed your economic director, and I want your confidence as much as he does. I seek every day to earn that trust and confidence. I love Walker County. I'm going to evaluate the business opportunity and then bring it to you and say, "Hey, I think this is worth looking at," or "This is not, it may be good somewhere else, but this is not going to be good for us. It doesn't raise our wages. It doesn't improve quality of life." And I'm very much on board with your, I heard what you just said about fun jobs. I know exactly what you mean. Different, a variety of things for people to choose from, especially young people that are going and getting these college educations and fighting their rear ends off to get these education and get these skilled trade designations and certifications. And then what happens? They look up and there's only one type of job that we have a vote. And what do they do? They go to Chattanooga, or they go to Atlanta, or they go somewhere.
Don't know that.
And then at some point, they come back here, but it's after their working time is over and they want to come back and enjoy their heritage here, which is great. But we want them here, so we do need this variety of jobs. You sign the non-disclosure, then they talk to you and tell you what the business is and you can begin at that point, having a conversation. If the business comes back and you make the cuts, the business will come back and say, "You're down to our final eight. We really like you." Then they'll usually come and say, present themselves as a company and say, "We want to come see the site person and hear from you and what you and your fellow citizens have to offer us." It's a fight. You got Canada, Mexico, Europe, Asia. It is a fight, every single day. And our neighboring states fight us every single day for these opportunities. And we get down to the details and we say something along the lines of, "If, if you do not raise our average wage rates for our county existing, we respect you, but it's not a fit for us." We respectfully say, "It's not going to work." Or they may, they may say, "We're going to demand, we're going to require of you an abatement of your school taxes to make this deal work." We shake their hands respectfully and say, "Thank you for your interest in our county. That is not going to work here. That is not what we're trying to do. We're trying to strengthen education." So sometimes it doesn't work. And when we say no, we're still bound by that non-disclosure. We would never in the world want to embarrass a company that had interest in us just because it wasn't a fit. There's no way the commissioner and I are going to stand up there and say, "We ran XYZ Company off." We would never embarrass ourselves, and I mean all of us, by doing such a thing. So you don't ever know those no's. And then sometimes we think it's a yes. And if we think it's a yes, if it requires any kind of incentive, that process then goes to me going to the development authority and saying, "Here are the facts." And the development authority meetings are public meetings, by the way. I've heard a lot of people say different. Every development authority meeting is a public meeting. I will take this deal to them and say, "I have scrutinized this up one side, down the other. In my professional opinion, I believe that this is a benefit to our county." Present the facts to them. They're the only ones that can provide incentives.
Who's on the development authority?
Excuse me, please, just let me finish. And at that point, the development authority says, "Yes, this makes a lot of sense." Or they could say, "No, thank you for taking the time to analyze it, but we don't agree." And they have every right to do that. And so then, then you have a deal and an announcement. If the development authority approves it, now you have a deal. Anything that you ever hear about, "The deal was already done before," that is never true, period. No matter what you hear from people, it can't be through until it goes to that public meeting. It can't. There is no authority to do so. So when you hear that, I would ask you to consider that it is factually untrue. It can't be true. So I guess I've taken long enough.
No, and that's the legal process, as he's saying, until it goes before the development authority and there's a vote. Legally, there's no grounds for it.
Well, you know, back when VoteWagons came to Chattanooga, they talked about it every single day, almost. There didn't seem to be an NDA involved with that.
I'm sure there was probably early on.
Well, but I mean, still, the, the city was involved in the whole process of it. So after y'all do all this, when do we, is the deal done before we're actually invited back to say something?
No, sir, let me, let me reiterate that. I, I just said that, but I'm going to say it again.
Right. I understand that.
When the deal is, cannot be done and is never done prior to the proposal being presented to the Walker County Development Authority for their consideration. Every meeting of the Walker County Development Authority is a public meeting, every one of them, all of them. So that is the point. You might hear about it before that, the details. That would be the company would say, "We're excited about this. We'd like to go to the community and make our case ourselves." We say, "Thank you. Hello, we want to talk about it."
See, I think a company that's good at their word and has good jobs will step out front and say, "Hey, look, we want to do this." But a company that, that is terrible on, on water pollution, a terrible record, and, and then plus our roads and impact of everything else, the beautiful land that we have, I mean, it's just gorgeous.
Mr. Owens, let me, let me say something, please, in defense of these companies. I was the companies before I was your representative, being in the Coca-Cola business. The companies, they're not bad because they don't want to talk. It's very important for all of us as citizens to understand, don't vilify or demonize a company that doesn't want to talk. There are a lot of things at play for them. Real estate prices, when they start talking, go through the absolute roof, especially if it's a highly successful company and people go, "Aha!" And all of a sudden, the, the real estate deals they may have with a private land owner, all of a sudden, they don't want to talk like that. And number two, their competitors start piecing together, "Aha, they're going to make a move to Marion County, Tennessee, or Walker County, Georgia. Aha!" They, they don't want to give that away. They're fighting every day for market share and profits for their shareholders. And, you know, it's very important to understand, I, I hope that no one will ever think if a company doesn't want to talk, they're bad, because that is not, that is not true at all.
The EPA just relaxed all the licenses and, and so now the states and the, and the factories can do that. I mean, that's national. That was the EPA.
The EPD in the state of Georgia has some of the strictest regulations on environmental in the country. And so they have the ability to put more streamwain guidelines in to protect the natural resources. So when you have a new company come in, they're not grandfathered in on anything locally, state, or national of any company. So the state's just not going to tolerate a company that's going to come in and cause pollution.
We want either. We want, we don't want either.
I'm in the same way. We're not going to tolerate it either.
Yeah, I suppose I would hope, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Ruth Allmeyer, new resident to the code in Walker County. I live down on Hockdale Road. I just have a couple of questions. One, I mentioned, I learned a lot at the last meeting and at this meeting. First question is, who is on this development authority that would have to approve anything the county is going to vote?
I can answer that one for you first, before we go on to the next one and not yet. The Walker County Development Authority is a constitutional authority through the state of Georgia here. Within the authority, there are six members of the development authority. One seat of that authority is able to be appointed by the governing body of Walker County. In this case, it is our sole commissioner gets to choose one person.
Out of each county?
It is for Walker County.
The city of Lefet gets to choose one person. The mayor and council get to choose one person that is on that board. The city of Chickamauga gets to choose one person that's on that board. And the city of Rossville gets to choose one person that's on that board. And there are two at-large members that can be nominated from within the board of people that the existing board believes are qualified and bring incremental value to that body. And they can be nominated and selected from within. So the majority of your board is appointed by elected officials.
Who are the two at-large? Do, I mean, are they already elected or is it yet to be determined? I just have no idea.
Well, Max Morrison and Mark Chandler are the two current at-large members. And then that board hires an executive director, which is usually your county's lead economic developer. And I, I served at, on the development authority for five years and three years recently as the chair. As the appointee of the city of Lefet and elected by the other board members to be the chair of that authority, once I agreed to come to work for you, I then... the chair of that authority, once I agreed to come to work for you, I then, of course, was compelled to resign from the board because the board then elect, or they employed me, basically, to be the executive director. So you have a point person in each county. Someone is gonna be your, your lead person when the calls come in, who is it gonna go to? And of course, you would hope that it would be someone that understands these processes and what these businesses are doing and can make a good presentation and representation for you, all of us. So my role today is kind of two roles. I'm the executive director, but do not have a vote. The executive director cannot vote on the development authority. And I'm your representative through your commissioner as your economic development director.
Okay, thank you. Um, secondly is more just of a comment, 'cause at the last meeting, um, it was said, you guys explained how the previous administration would do school tax abatement, but you guys aren't doing it and we'll just gladly respectfully decline any business that it kinda asks for that. Um, and then there's all the continual conversation about how, you know, there's an NDA and we need to trust you to look out for our best interest. And it just kinda dawned on me that a lot of this could have been eliminated and avoided if we would just add to that list of things of people we won't do business with. You know, if you are a major polluter and wanna come into the Cove, thank you, but no thank you, you know? And then we wouldn't have to constantly pester and pepper for information and answers if it was a blanket statement to all residents of the Cove and of Walker County, we're never gonna bring large-scale industry, low-paying jobs into the Cove. And I know you're saying they're not low-paying, but, I mean, time will tell. So that's just more of a statement that made me think a lot of this could have been maybe avoided if we just had a blanket statement from our elected officials about protecting the Cove from types of businesses.
Now, I think, uh, from, from my perspective anyway, you're not gonna hear a lot of blanket statements like that from me on subjective matters. Uh, people would say, you better tell me there's not ever gonna be a Coca-Cola plant built in Walker County, 'cause I don't like Coke. And I'm gonna say, I'm never gonna say.
Why?
That's never gonna happen. What I will say is that never are we going to present for approval any company that's going to do harm to our county that your commissioner and I both grew up in and have multiple generations of ancestors here and are going to die here. We, I'll make that blanket statement.
No.
We're never gonna go and say, oh, this is a money play, but it's gonna be terrible to the county. I'll say, never will we ever do anything. Before you applaud, you might wanna retract that because you may disagree on something.
Right.
And then you need to understand that. I don't want you to take those words and say, oh, he just said, if I don't like something, he'll never let it come. I'm not saying that at all. What you may dislike, 99 other people, it may be the future for their children. And you may not like it 'cause you've already made your money or you've already got your kids through college, but 99 other people are saying, please pursue these quality jobs and opportunity for my children. So I would ask that at some point, anytime, just because you might disagree that you not turn that in your own mind into a vilifying thing over their bad. I think there's certain things we could all agree on. If someone called and said, we've got this fantastic opportunity for nuclear waste disposal, we're gonna say out of hand, thank you for considering us, we will say right now, no need to pursue that. The answer is no. I think we would all agree on something like that. But remember on these subjective opportunities, one person's, I don't like it, is another person, this advances opportunity for my children. And we're gonna explore these opportunities and we're gonna deliver facts for consideration. That's my pledge to you. We'll explore anything that's reasonable and go through the process. And at the end, here are facts and here is an opinion to go with those facts. I would hope that's what you want me to do for you.
Yes, absolutely. And I, I mean, to that point, my oldest is six, so I don't have anyone even through first grade yet. So my whole life is ahead of me here to raise my children. And, I mean, to make it personal, I mean, we just left our 10-year construction business that we built in Alexandria, Virginia, to start over here. So we've sunk everything into this local economy in this local area. So we are as invested as anyone and need opportunity and growth, but I'm not against development, I'm not against economic growth. You know, the facts do need to be considered. And I'm getting a little bit annoyed that the residents of the Cove are constantly dismissed, like we just don't matter.
Wait a minute, whoa, 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 whoa. Hold on, hold on, hold on. If you were being totally dismissed, you wouldn't be standing there with a gun.
You would, you just not wanna hold public hearings?
That's right. Previous administration settled it.
Well, I wasn't here for that.
So.
Thank you, thank you for having public hearings, I mean it.
This is not ignoring the citizens. We are listening and, and taking public comment, uh, to give everybody an opportunity to stand where you're standing.
Good, and that, you're absolutely right. I do appreciate, I appreciate this. I've just been floored by the non-disclosure and the rumor mill. That was just flooring to me, that we couldn't get any factual information. I understand what you're saying about business. We did a real estate business. I understand non-disclosures. So I, I mean, but, and so I am thankful for this public forum, 'cause if there wasn't this, there'd be nothing besides, you know, putting up signs.
'Cause the, the way the world of economy is, if, if we were not willing to sign an NDA and non-disclosure, we just said, absolutely, we're not gonna sign an NDA. You might as well put the, the sign on the door that says, Walker County is closed for any future development or business. Sorry, look somewhere else.
Right.
Because that's what you're telling the world.
Right.
Is that you're, you're closed for business.
I think, I have two last points. And the first one is that if we do think this is a good thing for Walker County to bring pilgrims pride here, that we need the jobs, that there are enough high-paying jobs, there's enough, enough management, I don't know how many managers a chicken facility needs, you know, enough people to come back from college and work there, then it needs to go in the industrial park. It needs to go. And that just seems to be a total win-win for me. We preserve the Cove and can use those natural resources and activities to drive us forward, and we can use the industrial park and industry to drive us forward. So I really struggle that we just can't go down that parallel path of win-win.
Thank you for sharing your ideas on that.
Thank you. And my last comment is a little personal, and I have to say, we've, my husband and I have been married eight years and we've been looking forward to moving to the country since we got married. It's been our work, our life's work. I've been more than excited to be here, and I have not liked to come and find myself immediately on the, um, opposition from the local government. I've felt uncomfortable in this, um, just because, not uncomfortable in using my voice and my opinion, but I've felt uncomfortable. Um, and then last night, I was sitting at home and I don't know if it's a online TV show or an online radio show or whatever it is, but you were being interviewed commissioner and there's call-in radio, people can call in and ask you questions.
Yeah, I do that every Wednesday night at that clock.
Okay, so, um, and I was just listening along, and if I misunderstood your tone, that's fine, but there was quite a bit of jest around, we're all showing up in red tomorrow night, we're all showing up in red tomorrow night. And I, it made me sad more than anything, because the campaign's over, you represent us all, including me and my family. And being a concerned citizen, should it make me, you know, someone to just kinda get poked fun at, you know? We're, we're trying to do things to bring attention to something we think is a very serious matter and we wanna see something change. So, I mean, I've, I've been respectful, you've been respectful here, I'm just saying that commentary, just a footnote of, like you weren't fighting for me in that conversation, you know, so, but you want me to trust you. So I don't have any choice but to trust you anyway. So, um, but anyway, that's just my commentary on that, because I want to be an active participant, citizen in Walker County, and I feel like this has been a pretty big hot topic to kinda walk into right off the bat. So, anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else like to speak on any topic? Yes, for Jim?
Hello, my name is Jim Powell and I'm a citizen of Chickamauga, Georgia. A couple of things. There was just a vote on the, on the ballot just Tuesday, and the citizens of Walker County spoke out on the question, should the development authority be elected rather than appointed? Because the development authority has the power to levy tax. You have no control over what goes on on the development authority. Now, Mr. Warlaw said something about abating school tax. Legally, you cannot abate school tax without permission of the Walker County School Board because they set their own millage rate, so you do not have the authority. You can abate taxes for the general fund, and, uh, you know, the thing that bothers me about the non-disclosure thing is that it's not that we find out necessarily that it's pilgrims pride or it's Volkswagen or whoever it is. The problem that bothers me is nobody knew anything about the hotel on the mountain until we found out that they had given them a 30-year.
Yeah.
Property tax abatement. And we don't know what is in the non-disclosure thing for the, if it's pilgrims pride or if it's little dogs, I don't know. But if there's another $10,000 or $15,000 of tax abatement involved in that, who's gonna pay the property tax? 30 years, I'll be 101. Now, if I'm still here, I'm gonna be a real contrarian. It's not my grand, it's not my kids are gonna be paying the property tax, it's gonna be my grandkids and my great-grandkids, 'cause my kids, my youngest one's 39, so she's gonna be 69 in 30 years. Uh, that's the thing that bothers me about that. And, you know, uh, Mr. Warlaw explained all the things that they, that they do and, and they talk to these companies, but the thing of it is, they, you, you can't even do a public records request to the development authority. They are exempt by the legislators. Jales Mullis, Steve Tarvin, John Diffinbaugh, the whole bunch down there voted to exempt the development authority from open records. So when you request information from them, they can tell you to get lost.
That's not right.
And be within their legal right.
That's not right.
So, you know, I don't know who's supposed to pay these taxes. We have been taxed for Bebe's hospital that she didn't pay off. And I'm 71 years old, so it's getting a little hard for me to pay extra little taxes and fees. And by the way, that helped whatever, it was not a tax, it was, a lot of people think it's a tax. It was a fee that was tacked on, it is not a tax. Am I right, Commissioner? So, you know, people need to be aware. If you don't know what's going on, you're in a dangerous situation. And if, people that are on Facebook, if you will go, there are new pages set up, Walker County Board of Commissioners 2018. Go on there, tells you all about it. It's gonna be on the ballot in November to vote whether we have a five-man board. There'll be one man from each municipality. And a woman. There'll be one person. And then there'll be one at-large who will serve as the county manager, so to speak. So that's what I have to say. I, I'm not totally ignorant of government, uh, operations. I worked 12 years for the city of Chickamauga, so I know all the little things. And, and being appointed to the, to the development authority by the mayor and council, whoopee! Because you don't have any authority, you don't have any say-so other than to vote them out if they put the wrong person on there. So that's what I have to say.
Mr. Powell, I wanna give some comment back on some of the things you've said. I've known you for many years and have high respect for you, and you're, you know, you writing that you worked for city government for some time there. Appreciate your service doing that, but some of the comments you made about development authorities is incorrect information. So I think for the citizens to understand, uh, I'd like to, to speak on that, elaborate on that. Uh, the constitutional authority that is given to a development authority in the state of Georgia, now this doesn't apply, I don't know what other states do, but it does apply to the state of Georgia. Uh, you made the comment about the open records. Well, that applies to all development authorities across the state. If there's an active project, then they're not subject to open records, just like if there's an active project that the state's involved in, they're not subject to open records either. And that's not a rule that we made.
That's true.
That is a rule that was made at the legislative session.
That's true.
Okay, signed off by the governor of this state. 'Cause they understand how the global economy is with doing business, and if somebody has the ability on an active project to go and do an open records request and reveal everything that's being discussed, deal dead. And you would see the state of Georgia, instead of being the number one state five years in a row to do businesses, it would be the last state in the world that they would wanna do business in. And so that's a very important protection that needs to be in place in order for Georgia to stay number one.
It's a lack of transparency.
Second of all, local development authorities do have the ability to leverage up to one mill of property tax. That's all they can leverage. That is their extent of their authority.
Our school tax.
That was done back in 2015, when they sold the bonds and they leveraged Mountain Cove Farms, the Civic Center, and the Ag Center. So they maxed that out. So the current development authority cannot raise it a tenth of one percent or anything for the next 13 years. We are maxed out. That one mill has already been leveraged to pay back that bond that was done by the previous administration and the previous development authority board.
Except for one vote.
Yes, thank you, except for one vote. This right here is the only man on that board that voted no. He fought against that, and he was the long ranger on that board as a voting member who lobbied and went and did everything he could to stop that fiasco that created that serious liability for this county in leveraging Mountain Coves and creating this, this, this debacle.
She made a lot of huge mistakes.
And so, one of the things here to bring clarity to is based off of the legal authority of a, of development, a constitutional, now there's differences in development authorities, but as a constitutional authority, which Walker County is, this authority board does have the legal right to abate all property taxes.
Including school taxes.
That includes city taxes. So like, as an example, the city of Chickamauga, as you know, doesn't have a millage rate for city government, but the other, say, city of Lefet does, city of Rossville does. Development authority has the ability to abate that in any local city, school tax or county tax, or county property taxes.
I would question that.
It's, it's been done, uh...
Can you have, can you have someone give me the, uh, the code? Can you have, can you have someone give me the, the code on that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we can get that for you. But it, it's done across the state and that's in the legal.
So, you're saying that the development authority can go in and tell the city of Chickamauga's school board that they're going to abate property taxes for some company that wanted to come into the city of Chickamauga?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
That's not bad or wrong.
That's correct. And so, that's why each of these cities have representation on the, on the development authority board to be the representative from that city to vote on those type of deals.
I'd like to see a code on that.
Okay. We, we can get that too. Okay, who's next? Yes, sir, Mr. Pope.
I'm Jim Pope. And Jim Powell brought up something I want to discuss. But you have partially answered this. Now, it is open records. Now, I do agree you got to keep business records, maybe confidential records. But what about non-business? Like, what is the budget of the, of that development authority? Things like this. I feel like the people should know, it should be transparent. And I think if we submitted a open record request, we should be able to get what you said.
Mr. Pope, I can answer that for you right now. Every meeting of the development authority is a public meeting. And every financial penny of the development authority is discussed in detail at every single meeting.
The financial report is given at every meeting?
What if I submitted an open record request, would they give it to me?
It depends on what it would be for.
I want to know the budget, I want to know the salary of those people.
You wouldn't need an open records request. You can come sit with me tomorrow and I'll give you all of that.
Okay, just.
I'm, I'm not being, Mr. Pope, I, I didn't mean that disrespectfully. I think we're laughing. I meant that respectfully. Yes, sir, that's available. You can come, just come by and sit with me. I didn't want that to sound as if I was being disrespectful. But I will give that, that to you tomorrow. That's, that's open to everybody every day, any day.
Exactly what is confidential and what is not confidential.
Yes, sir. What is, what is covered, I guess, under a non-disclosure or what is protected by the state of Georgia is revealing the requirement to reveal companies' trade secrets that they have shared with us as they're negotiating. And the commissioner said, I can repeat what he said, but he said it perfectly. If you remove that protection from a company that's saying, we're thinking about coming here and we say, well, guess what? Tell me all about it. And then I walk out and go to Facebook and say, guess what their plans are for the future? Here's where they want to be. We would be the laughing stock of the United States of America. The state of Georgia would never, ever get another business. And that's why the legislature moved to not only protect it, but to compel us to not talk about it. They got tired of losing businesses to Alabama or Mississippi or Tennessee or Texas. And I don't blame them. It was appropriate, in my opinion, the appropriate action for them to take. That we are not allowed to go reveal trade secrets of a public or private company that seeks to do business here. We should have no right whatsoever to reveal that.
Oh, no, not at all.
No. I, I do support the legislation.
What, I want to make this comment. I agree with you entirely. Trade secrets and company information that might be considered in this area should be kept confidential and secret. I have no problem there. But anything else, I think it should be government business and it should be open to the government, I mean, to the people, if we submitted that open records request.
Yes, sir, let me address that. I'm in a very respectfully disagree with you on that idea. And the reason being at the point during that negotiation term, we're trying to make, to present a profitable opportunity to that company. If that were public during the negotiation, please stay with me. Don't take one part of this and run off on me here. That part of the negotiation, if that were public, then everyone in Asia and everyone in Alabama and everyone in Colorado and Texas would be saying, we know exactly what Georgia is trying to do here. We want this company, we don't want it to go to Georgia.
Right.
There's no way it would be in our interests during that period of time to reveal what we're trying to do to be attractive to that business. Now, let's move forward. At the point where that, the company says, you know what? We're willing to accept your deal. Now, remember, at that point, every bit of it goes to the board. Remember back from earlier in our discussion.
Right, right. Talking about, they have to go to the board next, yeah.
But not during the negotiation time.
Right.
And just because it goes there does not mean it's done. It's not done until it's approved there. So, it's just something to think about.
Yeah, wow.
I wouldn't support making those things available while we're trying to beat Mexico out of an opportunity. Because we're going to get killed. They're going to know exactly what we have to offer and what our schools are like and all.
Again, I want to agree with you that you need to protect the potential businesses.
Yes.
Company. I disagree with you.
Yes, sir.
Other things that's not related to business should be fixed.
Yes, sir, I respect that, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Who's next?
Okay. For specific, Mark Schuck, Cooper Heights. And over the years, there has been a lot of sporadic placement of industry around the area. And, you know, it's nothing that anybody could do anything about now, except a lot of zoning is put in place to help control that now. What is the county doing to lead reputable companies besides using tax abatements to the new industrial park on Twenty-Seven? Is tax abatement the only ace that we have? Or is there anything else to try to, to try to move industry to places that are, that are designed for Cooper Heights?
Well, with economic development, you've got to figure out or understand what the need is of that particular company that's, that's searching. And they all have a priority list that may differ. A lot of times you see many of them will have the, kind of the top ten and they may rank those in order. They may end up with all the same ten, but they may not be in the same order. You know, and so it varies. And so, not every company potentially has the same need. So, give an example. Not every company has a need for rail service. Not every company has a need for sewer. There's some companies out there now that has no need for your electricity. They generate their own. And so, you've got to look and match up what those needs are. And many times what they're doing is all available property that's on the market ends up in databases on websites and these site selectors have access to that, you know, information because it's on the web. And they'll go through and they're vetting you. I mean, we get thousands of hits on the website every single month. And we might make the top fifty list with a particular company and they'll call up and sometimes, most often, they're working through the Northwest Georgia Joint Development Authority. And they'll say, okay, you represent four counties. I'm going to look at this site, this one and this one. And, my name's Steve. I drive a white car.
It happened last week.
And you don't know their last name? You don't know where they're from? And they go, I like this one, eh, this one's no good, this one's no good. I'll be in touch. Okay? I mean, and so, two, three weeks later, you may hear, hey, you've made the top twenty. By the way, my last name is whatever. I need some information. I want to know about your utilities. I want to know about your school systems. I want to know about, you know, distance from this or what type of water pressure you have. Or, I mean, there's just, you never know what their questions are. You send them the information, thank you. Sometimes you never hear back from them. And other times they'll say, well, hey, we got one more question. And so, you, you kind of work it through the process to try to make that short list. And then once you make that short list, then that's when they'll come in and present you that non-disclosure. So, like I said, you had one just the other day. I don't even think you even got the guy's last name, did you?
No.
Do you notice the company that he's representing?
No.
Oh, no.
We're a long way from knowing the company directly. But I got the call that said they have three sites, two in Alabama, two in Georgia, one in Alabama. And they're helicoptering.
And you had how much notice?
I had fifteen minutes to be there.
Notice.
And I did go there and represent you and represented you well. But they're fifteen minutes, they're not saying, where would you like to take me today? They're saying, we're going to be at the industrial park at ten fifteen and you have twelve minutes. And then I'm on that chopper and I'm headed to Trenton and then I'm headed over to Alabama. It, it's really, it's a really fast-paced, it's, it's a tough competitive business. It really.
What is the county doing, though, to try to steer those companies to these particular areas besides standing back and saying?
We're not standing back.
I mean, well, basically standing back and letting them make most of the decisions.
I understand your question, exactly what you're asking here. And I, I think I do. And I'm going to attempt to answer it. You're saying, other than just throwing property tax abatements at companies and just saying, you know, this is what we have, right? I mean, just what are we doing that's more creative than that?
And not letting the company basically dictate to you, well, what they want you to do, there has to be a little bit of give and take on that. Can't be all just one.
Oh, there, there's a lot of give and take. They don't, they may dictate their ideas of what they want us to do, but they don't dictate a darn thing to us that we are compelled to do. If it's not in the interest of the county, they can dictate all they want.
Right.
Usually, the company is the lead in saying, here is what we're looking for in a site, in a site. And unless you have a unique quality, let's just say some physical situation where the rail meets at a perfect place and there's a waterfall on both sides and they say, wow, what a spot for a tourist attract. If you have something, some unique quality like that, you may get to dictate. But a site is a site, is a site, is a site. They look the same everywhere for the most part in industrial parks. But to your question, one, one of the things that, if we were in a different financial condition right now that we could do, is if you go to that new park and you level that thing out, now a company says, okay, this is ready to go. It gives you a huge advantage. But let's just say, please do not hold me to this because I'm only making an example here. Let's say it would cost six million dollars to level that earth out over there. No way are we in a position at this moment to do any, we're not doing anything like that. We're not spending money. So, right now, we're probably about even with other people. But some communities, if they have an abundance of resources, which we hope to have one day, they're leveling those sites. And when the site selector comes in, they're saying, wow, there's forty acres ready for me to pour concrete. That is a huge advantage. And then when they say abatements, you say, we already provided you plenty of incentive by doing this grading work. It's just an example, okay? I know it's not exciting, but that's.
Well, it's, it kind of sounds like since we're in the financial situation that we're kind of in, that we're kind of taking whatever comes down the road.
No, we've walked away from a lot of things. We've walked away from quite a bit of stuff.
Eh, it may be time to walk away from one more.
Yes. Okay, who's next? All right. Well, it's not even nine o'clock yet, folks.
If there was that railroad spur and that waterfall that you're talking about, if somebody owned that and they wanted to sell it to somebody and it was owned properly, is there anything that you can do to prevent them from doing that? Do we have control to resist that?
No, sir.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
We would never infringe upon private business transaction between a private landowner and a company unless, unless there was, they were in violation of a state or local law.
Understood. Would they kind of get business license and start doing whatever they want to do?
Yes, sir. The only time we're involved, and this may be worth noting or talking about a little bit here, that we're only involved in that at the point when they want some kind of incentive.
Right.
That's the only time. Otherwise, this is, this is the United States of America. If they want a private.
Sell what you want.
Yeah.
Within the, within the laws and regulations.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, yes, sir.
That's good.
Okay, great discussion. Appreciate y'all coming out tonight and y'all have a safe travel home.
Thanks.